Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. This is the Town of Lexington's Planning Commission meeting. It's our normal monthly meeting. It's being held at 8:00 a.m., Wednesday, November 23rd, 2016. The meeting is being broadcast live and will air several times throughout the week on the town's informational channel. I am Keith Frost, Planning Commission Chair, and I'll ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, Moscow Kaufman.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feit.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Gibson.
Good morning, I'm Jeannie Michaels.
Good morning, I'm John Bartlett.
Good morning, I'm Brooke Poole, Town Administrator.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Manus, Town Council Member.
Good morning, Karen Walker, Director of Parks and Sound Protection.
Good morning, Charlotte Thomas, Building Commissioner.
First, we're doing some planning and building.
Good morning, John Heas, Director of Planning.
I'm Karen Hammett, Assistant Minister of Parks.
All right. At this time, I will ask Commissioner Gibson, and she will lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this season of Thanksgiving, Father. During this time, we thank you for all your provisions to our family, to our town, and, Lord, but yet we remember those who are suffering great loss in Tennessee with the children that were killed on a bus accident, or for our service members that are away from their family, and for those that serve our nation and our town. We thank you for their service and their sacrifice, Lord. Just pray that we would be mindful of those around us and be thankful during this season and admit your joy, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. We have no deletions to our agenda. We only have two items, so we're not removing anything this morning. First item for us to address is approval of our minutes from our October 19th, 2016 meeting. You have a copy of those in your packet. Do we have any edits, or do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
No.
All right. Thank you. All right. First item of old business is site plan approval for a mixed-use plan development located near North Lake Drive and Old Cherokee Road. John?
Excuse me. Good morning. Hagan Engineering requested approval for a mixed-use project that includes 234-unit apartment complex and two commercial outparcels back in September. The project encompasses 24.4 total acres with 19 and 1/2 of those being dedicated to the apartments, and 1.82-acre outparcel for one and 3.09-acre for the second commercial outparcel. The project is being pursued as a planned development because conditions related to wetlands and stream buffers on the site make it difficult for the apartments to meet the traditional buffer setback and parking requirements. Town Council reviewed the project during their October work session and referred it back to the commission for additional discussion. During council's discussion, concerns were expressed about the project's adherence to the comprehensive plan, the number of parking places being provided, the impact the project would have on traffic, and the impact it would have on the adjacent neighborhoods, as well as how the apartments will be screened from proposed commercial outparcels. Representatives of the company making the proposal are here to answer any additional questions you all may have and address some of these concerns that were raised.
Okay. All right.
I'm Brantley White. I'm with Ardmore Residential. Barrett Hagan is with Hagan Engineering. We've got a PowerPoint presentation to go through, but we've also got hard copies of everything. I think there was some difficulty seeing last time we were here, so. I think, as John mentioned, the reason we're here is there were some concerns brought up by council during the work session. We've attempted to either clarify or answer or solve any of those issues, so hopefully when we go through this presentation, you'll concur with that. The first slide is an elevation of our building. Just want to clarify that we'll have brick and fiberglass siding, possibly some stone, possibly some cedar shake, but this is the general appearance of our exterior of our building. As we've mentioned in our previous presentation, community amenities will include an elite fitness center, resort-style saltwater pool, grilling pavilion, fully equipped playground, complimentary Starbucks coffee bar, high-tech business center, and complimentary Wi-Fi for all residents. The unit appointments will include granite countertops, stainless-style appliances, nine-foot ceilings, designer cabinets, crown molding, walk-in closets, and garden tubs with tile walls. On the next slide, we've included, council wanted to kind of see what we've done at other projects, so we've included a lot of photographs of some other projects. There's a pool, two pool pictures, a grilling pavilion picture, an exterior picture of an existing project. On the next slide, similar additional photos of some clubhouses that we've done in the past. The next slide shows some of our interiors with the appointments that I mentioned. An additional concern or question that came up during the council work session concerned traffic, and Mike Ridgeway, who's our traffic engineer, can address that more specifically. But one of the concerns was that the morning traffic, the counts that Mike has put in his study, there were questions about it. And I think one thing that I just want to point out, I pulled some statistics from the National Multi-Housing Council, which is an industry organization. This has a lot of information about renter demographics, and specifically new apartments, which are apartments that they documented from 1990 to 2014, which is the center column. The second slide, I think, has some more important information, which is typically in new apartments, there's not, and this is not just new apartments, but apartments in general, there's not as many children as you might think. There's 9% of new apartments are a married couple with children. A single-parent home, which, you know, could include joint custody, is 13%. So between the two of those, you're talking about 22% of renters that have children. If you go to the next slide, of that 22%, the very bottom that's underneath the yellow highlight, only 21% of people that have children that are renters have more than one child. And I think that what that really shows is that a lot of renters are either a couple with a young child who are saving to buy a house. You don't have as many school-aged children as you might think, and that is definitely our experience as multifamily operators. Another point that Mike might go into more detail on, but, you know, renters have, they work in a lot of different areas. Summer service, industry workers, they can work nights, they can work weekends, they work at hospitals, just different hours. So we have retirees. So we don't necessarily have the nine-to-five that I think was alluded to in the council meeting, and I think that when Mike goes into his information, there's just multiple studies that go through how those traffic counts are determined. So hopefully, we can allay the concern about the validity of the morning traffic. At this point, I'll hand it off to Barrett, and we can go into some other details.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Barrett Hagan, and I did a lot of the site plans that you have all received and reviewed. Wanted to go through a few things in particular. The slide that we have up now shows our site plan, and we've got the site plan shown with green areas around that really kind of represent how much area there is between us and the property lines, especially along the backside of the apartment buildings that don't have any parking behind them. One thing I want to point out on this slide that was brought up in the past as a potential question was how are we going to provide access for future development along North Lake Drive? And we've got a second entrance, I'm going to call it a secondary entrance. It doesn't line up with our clubhouse. And we've shown an access easement that goes through the proposed out parcel, but also stubs to the property that we don't control. So that will allow, when that parcel comes in for development, they'll be able to access an internal road to get them out to North Lake. The next slide, we're calling this a proximity plan. Basically, this is our site plan overlaid on top of the overall tract. Now, we are only purchasing the portion of the property that's in the light green. The dark green is the outparcels that are part of the project but not owned, won't be owned by the apartment developer. But everything inside the yellow line is a part of the overall tract. And so you can see that we are quite a ways away from any of the residential. Most of the points on site are over 500 feet, and that is a measurement to disturbed area. That's not a measurement to building. That's a measurement to actually where we're stopping disturbing areas, so we've got a little bit more property between these dimensions and the actual buildings. Down there in the bottom corner is the closest spot, and that's 400 feet, but that's 400 feet from the parcel line of the subdivision in our disturbed area. You can see we're still quite a ways away from any residents. The next slide is, we're calling this a buffer plan. This was in response to questions concerning how are we screening our project from the existing commercial and the proposed commercial? There is a description along the top which shows a retaining wall. That retaining wall is located on the south edge of the sheet. If you go back to the proximity plan, kind of reference where we're at, you can see some linear buildings. That's a self-storage facility, so that is the buffer that we are looking at on the next one. If you look at the profile view there, we've got a 10-foot-tall retaining wall with a slope, and then plantings on top of the slope. So the building is fairly well screened from commercial view. I'm not even sure that you'll know that it's there from the commercial element. Okay. The next slide, we've got parking comparisons throughout some communities in South Carolina. One of the things that we're asking relief from is the parking requirements. We've got two different charts here. The first chart is a list of municipalities in South Carolina. Some of them are larger, but we tried to pick the main municipalities in South Carolina and see what their parking requirements would be if we were doing this project there. So we've got, the first column is Town of Lexington, which requires 498 spaces. The same type of project in Columbia would be 468. City of Greenville, 351. Greenville County, as you know, there's two different governing bodies in Greenville, is 363. Charleston, 351. Mount Pleasant, 351. The second chart is a depiction of parking that Ardmore Residential has in existing and newly proposed communities in the southeast. Most of them are in North, well, all of these are in North Carolina, South Carolina. So the first line is Ardmore at the Lake, which is this proposed project. If you go all the way over to the right, you can see spaces per bedroom, and we've got 1.09 spaces per bedroom. The other apartment complexes or developments are listed below, and as you can see, we're proposing, even though we do not meet the requirements of ordinance, this project still has more parking than projects that are existing or under construction. The next slide, I wanted to show you and point out that since our original submittal, we've added 20 spaces to the plan, and this slide is really just to give you an idea of where we added them.
Before we go on, Brantley, I want to ask you one quick question while we're here on parking. Have you guys received any complaints about parking spaces and availability over in Valentine?
Frankly, we have.
Okay.
Yes. And so we want to have adequate parking, and we have a lot more here than we have there.
Okay.
So, and I guess it's clear that we've added, but since the work session, we added, we didn't think we could find the space, but we did. We found, you know, the area for 20 additional spaces, so that gets us much closer to the ordinance. I think we should be specific about that.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to turn this over to our traffic engineer. Do you have any other questions related to what we just presented, or what we're addressing right now?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mike Ridgeway with SRS Engineering out of West Columbia. Just wanted to, if you could go to the presentation, there were some questions that arose about how do we project the traffic for the traffic study? We use the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is the national standard for projecting traffic. It's got multiple studies for just about any type of land use you can think of. If you go to the next slide, if you go into the book, this is Land Use Code 220 for Apartments. One thing I wanted to point out, typically residential uses are pretty easy to predict, meaning that it's pretty uniform data. Like a single-family house, we know generates about 10 trips a day. If you were to go to just about any single-family neighborhood across South Carolina and collect data, you'd get close to that. Some people make 18 trips a day, some people make two, but it averages out. Apartments are less than single-family. They generate about six to seven trips a day. But anyway, it's good data. It's a national standard. If you go to the next slide, this is our project, the trip generation for the 234 apartments. There was a question that came up, well, you know, if you have 234 apartments, there's going to be 234 exits during the morning, which, or you could have more if there were two cars per unit. But the way that works is that's one hour, that's a one-hour period during the morning. And as Barrett talked about earlier, not everyone goes to work at the same time. The peak hour out on Highway 6 at Old Cherokee is from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. It can differ at different intersections. At 378 and Old Cherokee, it's 7:15 to 8:15. But this is a one-hour period, so you see we have 94 exits. Some people may be going, that would not account for somebody that's going to work at 6:30 in the morning, wouldn't account for somebody that's going to work at 9 o'clock, but that's the peak hour of your adjacent street traffic, which in this case would be Highway 6, North Lake Drive. If you want to look down at the afternoon, well, look at the morning again, vast majority of exits, which is what you would expect in the afternoon. There's more entrances, there's more exits in the afternoon than you, you know, higher exits than, there's a fair amount of exits in the afternoon because people are out shopping. There's more traffic in general in the afternoon period because you've got people coming home from work, and you've got people going out to ball practice, what have you. The next thing we do is look at where are these people going? And that's our trip distribution table on the right of that page. If you look at the very top, we expect a lot of people to exit our site, make a left, make a right onto Old Cherokee, and end up at the intersection of 378. We assign almost half of our traffic to that movement. You know, if you look to the west, Lexington, out towards Gilbert areas to the west, 25%. We sent 20% across the dam to the north, and then we did have a small percentage that would go west on Old Cherokee Road. That could be some of the school traffic that we talked about. We don't expect to have a lot of traffic making that movement in the morning, but we did account for some. So then what we do is we distribute these trips on our network, which is simply the tables on the previous sheet, and this shows you where all of our traffic's going. If you can look down at the intersection of Old Cherokee and 378 for the morning, we have 42 vehicles that would be adding to that movement, just for scale. And then we add that on to the existing volumes that we've grown at a reasonable growth rate. And if you look at the last slide, or the next slide, that's a very heavy movement. We know that approach, people trying to get on 378 in the morning from Old Cherokee. That movement is 822 vehicles in the morning, which is pretty heavy, and you can see the heavy inbound flow on 378 as well. But just for scale, that 822 vehicles, and that's a one-hour period, we would be 42 of that 822 for scale. But, so then we, you know, we take these numbers and we analyze it to, you know, see the project impact, you know? Are you causing anything to fail? In this situation, we know that there is congestion at the intersection of 378 and Old Cherokee, but we were not causing it to fail. You know, there's some projects that are underway with the adaptive traffic signal system that we think will help the project, will help traffic in general in the Lexington area. But, you know, as we talked about in the first meeting, one of the mitigating factors that we took in is doing deceleration lanes at both of our driveways on Highway 6. Even though they're technically not warranted based on our volumes, we don't know what's going to happen with those outparcels, and we thought it was a good idea to put in the right-turn lanes and allow traffic to get out of the through lanes. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, or I can come back up if there's specific questions afterwards.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Egan? Thank you very much.
Okay.
The last slides are just simply, we did a full-blown landscape plan. That was something that was requested, so we can answer questions, or we've got detailed slides of the actual plantings that have been recommended. It meets the full Lexington requirements. And, you know, lastly, I'll just say, with adding the parking and hopefully the appropriate screening, one of the concerns with the screening was that the residents wouldn't want to be looking out to the commercial. And so I hope that slide displays that they really won't be, we have adequate trees, and with the retaining walls, they won't be looking at the back of commercial buildings.
Okay.
So hopefully, we have allayed any concerns, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you. I noticed we do have some folks in the audience this morning, and I'm assuming some of these folks want to speak to this. So if you don't mind, we're going to give them an opportunity, and then we may follow up with some additional questions. What I would ask is that if you have a group of folks here from a neighborhood or an area, if you could appoint a spokesman rather than everybody continuing to say the same thing over and over again, that would be helpful. Only two?
Oh, they're number two.
Okay, they're number two, so there's nobody here to speak to this item.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Good. I'm sorry. I just assumed there were. All right. Do we have any questions then of the developer, the engineer, traffic engineer? I appreciate your effort and working on this. I do think it helps address some of the concerns that we've heard, so I appreciate. You do it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, and I just will say that I appreciate, we want to take great efforts to keep our town great, and you have really taken great effort to do that. And seeing what you've brought to us and what the questions that we asked before that we felt like you had addressed, you have readdressed from council's concerns as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we just support our previous recommendations and send to council for their approval.
All right. So we are reaffirming our recommendation to council for approval of the site plan and the appropriate zoning classification. All right. Do I, we have a second?
Session.
All right. John, thank you very much. All right. Any further discussion? And real quickly, again, thank you. I will say, just for the record, I don't know that we heard anything significant from the discussions that have been had over the last month that really warranted us making any different decision than what we made before. I appreciate you continuing to address those concerns, but I'm not sure there was enough that really caused me to really want to reconsider the decision we made. We think it's a good project for the site, for the piece of property that you proposed to put it on, so thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Opposed? All right. Got that? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to item two, John, which is a proposed recommendation for zoning change to 390 Railroad Avenue.
Mr. Charlie Deep and Mr. Richard Thane requested to rezone 390 Railroad Avenue from general commercial to industrial. The Railroad Avenue Commercial Center was approved on the site in November of 2009. Since that time, one building has been constructed. Mr. Deep is requesting to change the zoning of the property to allow more flexibility for prospective tenants in the center. However, unless the classification of Railroad Avenue is also changed, no additional uses would be allowed that are not already allowed under the current zoning, because when we approve something, it has to meet the road classification as well as the zoning. Railroad Avenue is currently classified as a limited local road. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial or protected residential, and Railroad Avenue is classified as a limited local road, as I said.
All right. Is Mr. Deep here this morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you would please come forward, I guess, and give us a little more background as to why you're requesting this.
Certainly. Given my name is Charlie Deep with Ford Engineering, probably should have been the property owner as the applicant there, but I may have put my name there in his place, so I'd be glad to speak first, but obviously, they have a vested interest in this. I've been involved in the project since before 2009, but we initially started in 2009. We had 16 buildings on the property, pretty dense layout, and, you know, quite honest, I didn't pay too much attention to the commercial versus industrial zoning when we went through that. I was with another firm, and since then, Mr. and Mrs. Thane were not able to take the project forward due to economic factors. You know, here fairly recently, over the past year or so, we're able to put, they were able to put the first building up, and in doing so, we've seen the, kind of what the need is in the market for that area, and, you know, essentially, what we've got is, what we have shown are 5,000-square-foot buildings, 10 parking spaces, and some of the limitations there are that these folks don't usually And some of the limitations there are that these folks don't usually need 10 parking spaces. They don't get, you know, drive-in, walk-in traffic, retail-type traffic, so they really don't need very much parking. They need some space for laydown, material storage. I believe the guy that's there is an APAC technician or supplier. So those are the type of uses that we're seeing. And one of the big differences is, parking's not a huge difference, but that's one. And also landscaping, you know, landscaping is a big deal in commercial and industrial. It's, you know, you still have to have some landscaping, but not dense, I would call it. It's very dense in the commercial. And in this area, we're adjacent to undeveloped parcel on one side, and then the old town landfill on the other side. And Mr. and Mrs. Thane own the property toward the interstate as well, so on that side of the property. So those are the three sides. So those are the challenges that we're seeing with the commercial zoning. It's not a huge change, we don't see as far as how we're going to implement the industrial zoning. The main change would be probably a little less parking and a little less landscaping.
All right, any questions for Mr. Deep? And I will, I will point out, you left the fourth side off, which is the protected residential that's across the street, kind of category from you, which is my concern with an industrial zoning.
Hold on, park this there?
Yes. Yes.
And if I recall correctly, a sidewalk was required in this zoning.
In commercial, it would be.
Yes, in commercial.
But it would not be in, in industrial, it would not be.
Right.
And you are correct, that was, it was actually a stipulation of our motion to annex this property with a commercial zoning, was that the sidewalk would be constructed and installed.
I believe a section of that, I don't know if it's already been installed in front of that other small building, but we did discuss that with some staff, not putting that small piece in front of that existing building.
And I just want to, I guess, and whether you want to respond or Mr. Thane wants to respond, when we develop our comprehensive plan and when we go through our zoning, we try to make sure that, you know, we place the appropriate classification to provide protections. You know, our industrial areas in Lexington are out on Industrial Drive, Burton Road, up against the interstate. As we move back from those, just as we would on an arterial road where we have heavy commercial, we start into office commercial, limited commercial, to provide a buffer from our residential areas. To carry industrial further off of Burton Road back to Railroad Avenue adjacent to residential does not fit within our comprehensive plan. It doesn't fit within the philosophy of providing the more protected zoning classifications near our residential areas. So, I will be honest with you, I am very reluctant to change this from a commercial to an industrial classification, just because all of a sudden this guy, you know, could have any number of things across the street from him, asphalt plant, concrete plant, you know, whatever fits in industrial. And I think that's where we set ourselves up, I think, as a municipality for complaints and concerns from our citizens, because of the uses are not compatible with residential uses. I understand he may have the intention of doing, you know, some light manufacturing or assembly, but once it's owned commercial, it's owned, or industrial, it's owned industrial, and anything can go there. And I think part of our job is to make sure that we look at that and we look towards the future and make the appropriate determination. So, I'll tell you, I'm very reluctant to go back to an industrial off of Burton Road as we encroach upon those residences.
It seemed to us that that would be the only way to get around those issues, and maybe there's another way we can get around the parking and landscaping, but that was what seemed to be the most logical choice.
And I understand that. I think perhaps here, my recommendation to you would be, if you have issues with parking or landscaping, even setbacks, is that perhaps you talk with John about approaching Board of Zoning Appeals and looking for a variance there. I'm not sure they're unreasonable requests, but again, I think there's another avenue without us opening up the door to intense development up against the, right next door to the residential areas.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly not the intent, I don't know if you want to...
I'm Rick Thane. My life's everything we've developed in the property, and like Charlie said, this has gone on for some time. And our intent's not to change the scope of what we're doing at all. We're trying to get your small businesses, like heating and air guys, general contractors, that kind of thing, to lease these buildings. We're not after the asphalt plant, the concrete plant. And the side that we own on Burton Road is all, it's not zoned industrial, I don't believe, John, but it is an industrial-type setting. So there's really no need for a buffer there. The side that the town owns, where the landfill is, there's really no need for a buffer there. There's one other side that is undeveloped at the time. I spoke with that property owner this week, and, you know, he had no problem with it. So we're not trying to change the scope of what we're doing. We're trying to lessen the cost of probably 100,000 mile worth of landscaping for nothing and a sidewalk to nowhere. So that's, you know, we're not, we're not trying to affect the residents of that mobile home park at all. But, like I said, the scope of the work hasn't changed. We just want to do it the best way, the most cost-efficient way, and not damage the residents' lives. And I've spoke to many of the residents around that have gotten this letter and all, and I've heard no opposition to it whatsoever. Whether you go with industrial classification or the general commercial, we're, you know, I don't think it will affect what we're doing, but we would like to know the best way to go from here. You know our concerns.
And I will, I'll be honest, I think, as I just mentioned, you know, given the concerns, and I think you're going to hear it consistently from this group of opening the door for industrial development in this area, I think there is an avenue to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I think you have what sounds like a reasonable request, given the nature of what's around you as far as the screening options. I think that's probably your most appropriate option. Again, you will see, we'll take a vote here in a minute, and depending on how that turns out, but if it doesn't go fragrably, I would encourage you to talk with John and figure out how to work through that, because that is an option that may get you where you need to be without us opening some things that we don't necessarily want to open up.
If those on the committee are familiar with industrial court down where Saluda Hill Nursery is, that's the type of planning we're doing.
I understand, I understand. Again, it's just, it's from our standpoint, once we put that classification of industrial on it, it really opens a door. And, you know, say you don't sell your next three or four buildings and you sell the property, whoever potentially buys that in the future can do whatever they want to with it. And we really don't have that control. So I think there's an option for you to perhaps get to some of the variances that you want, your need. And I think I would suggest that, you know, depending on our decision today, that may be something you want to look into.
And it sounds like your mind is made up, but we also, to be fair to you, we have reduced the scope from 16 buildings initially to 10, so it's actually gotten significantly less dense than when we started. And that plan was approved with the 16 buildings.
Yeah, and again, you know, from our standpoint, it's not as much about density and those things as it is uses. And we're trying to make sure we have compatible uses for not only your commercial and industrial neighbors next to you, but also your residential folks that are across the street. That's our concern. Ms. Thane, would you like to come forward?
If I could, just to clarify...
Would you please give us your name for the record?
I'm Stephanie Thane.
Okay.
We are lifelong Lexington residents and do not want to do anything to disturb or upset the neighbors. But secondly, just to clarify, these buildings are for lease, not for sale. We are small business in Lexington for 20 years, Rick and I, and these buildings we intend to build and lease as our retirement. So we have 100% control over what kind of tenants go in there. And our other business actually backs up to this, so we also have vested interest as to what goes in there. And, you know, in our lifetime, the property won't be sold. The buildings will be for lease, you know, if it matters at all, just so, you know, we have total control of what type of vendors go in there.
I understand, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any more questions for either Mr. or Ms. Thane or Mr. Deep? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to deny the industrial zoning for this property at this time.
All right, a motion to recommend that we deny, or I guess recommendation that council deny the zoning change. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you very much, as you announced. Thank you very much. Again, encourage you to talk with John about the variance process to help you get through the, some of the landscaping and other issues that you're struggling with. Anything else for the good of the commission? All right, Britt?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Cadden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow is Thanksgiving, and I'm very thankful for y'all, the Planning Commission, for everything you do for our town. You do a great job of keeping Lexington a great town, so thank you very much for that. We've got a lot of things going on now that we're getting in the holidays, so if you'll bear with me, there's a couple of things I'd like to announce. Our Snowball Festival will be Friday, will begin on Friday, December the 2nd, with a concert and a carnival in the square, and we'll have the tree lighting at 8 o'clock on that Friday night, presented by the Town of Lexington, Lexington County Recreation and Aging, and B-106.7 will be there. And then on Saturday, there'll be the Patty Pats Warmer Heart 5K and 10K Race. That's going to begin at 7:30 here at Lexington Municipal Complex. 7:30 for the 10K, 7:40 for the 5K. If you're a runner, I hope you'll get involved in this. My son was actually in the hospital last year, and they gave us the Patty Pats. And it is just wonderful for those children who are there at Children's Hospital. So I encourage you to do that on Saturday morning. Then that evening at 5 o'clock, we're going to have Movies in the Park at the Ice House Amphitheater. So that'll be fun to be able to watch the movies there. Mickey's Christmas Carol and How the Grinch Stole Christmas. And those movies are going to begin at 5:30. And then Saturday is the Christmas, excuse me, Sunday is the Christmas Parade at 3:30 on Main Street. And that's presented by the Town of Lexington and the Lexington J.C.s. Again, that's on Sunday afternoon, always a great time. And new this year, following the parade, will be Songs of the Season Concert, again, at the Ice House Amphitheater. If you've not seen the amphitheater, it's beautiful. We look forward to using it during the holiday season. So if you get an opportunity, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we'll be busy with our Snowball Festival. Also, the town's collecting Toys for Tots now through December the 9th. And today, the collection is at Walmart from 3 to 6. So if you take a toys, unwrapped toy, so that it can be used for those children who are in need. And then on December the 5th, Monday, December the 5th, is the swearing-in for our newly-elected council members, Ron Williams, Todd Carnes, and Steve Baker. So everyone is invited to attend, and that's going to begin at 6:30 here in council chambers. So again, thank you for everything you do, and I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Kathy. And do you know if the registration for the 5 and 10K is, can they find that online at the town website?
I don't know about the town, you can go to Patty Pack.
Go to Patty Pack, okay. For those of you, I'd encourage you to join. I think Vice Chair Barry and I are, have been discussing running, so if you want to see a couple chubby guys try to run around town, come out and watch. So we're going to have, we're going to have fun, so...
Mr. Chairman, this is your first run you're doing. This is a great one to be...
Well, we've run a good bit at the gym, but yeah, we've done, I've done a couple around town, so it's fun. All right, anything else for the good of the group? Dan?
December the 9th, if I may add, we just said, December the 9th, we'll be celebrating Arbor Day. This is one of the requirements we have for Tree City USA, and we will be going for our 29th Tree City USA award.
Congratulations, good job. All right. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And we are adjourned. Again, thank you for watching the Town of Lexington's Planning Commission in action. This meeting was held Wednesday, 8:00 a.m., November 23rd, 2016. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I wish you a good day.